Especially down there. I said, yeah. In fact, not too long ago, you were always getting mad at me. Oh, well, things change.
It's time.
Hold on.
Yeah.
Okay, welcome everyone to the January tenth, twenty twenty-four Davis County Council Meeting. We'll start as you always do with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberating, and just so.
First order of business is the election of officers. This time I would take nominations for President, and then we'll do Vice President.
I'll make a nomination to appoint Mr. Tom Schaefer as President for twenty twenty-four.
Matt has a nomination for Tom to be President.
Second.
Second by Mike Myers, all favor I.
Aye.
All same sign. Congratulations. That's my last act for the for the year. I'll take nominations for Vice President. Knowing that I can't make a nomination.
I would move that Marilyn McCullough be nominated for Vice President.
Mike Sprinkle is nominated Marilyn for Vice President.
I'll second that nomination.
Matt has seconded, all favor I.
Aye.
All same sign. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Have a fun year. As they can attest, it gets enjoyable.
I would like to recognize Tony Dungeon for his leadership over the past year. Did an outstanding job for us, and I certainly appreciate the mentorship.
Thank you.
Okay, let's have a little call, we'll just state our names and go down. I'm Tom Schaefer, and I'm present.
Tony Dungeon, present.
Matt Meredith, present.
Mike Sprinkle, present.
Darren Holder, present.
Marilyn McCullough, present.
Mike Myers, present.
And we have a full slate of council, council people, I guess, councilmen. Okay, first issue on the agenda is our meeting minutes from December thirteenth. They're in your packet, they've been sent out previously, had time to review. What's your pleasure on the minutes?
I didn't see any additions or any problems. Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Tony Dungeon and seconded by Mike Sprinkle that we accept the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried unanimous. Okay, the next order of business, number three, is the interlocal agreements, agreement with the soil and water. Megan? So this is, this issue's been before us in the past, earlier this past year, and basically it's taking a full-time, part-time associate to full-time. Any other?
We've, we've signed the contract, I'm still waiting on a copy of that. Once I do, I'll get it to the auditor's office, but other than that, we're hitting around running.
And it's fully grant funded, correct?
Yes.
No additional charges?
Well, and then with the soil and water throwing in money as well, so.
Yes.
And we're the pass-through, so we pay it and then we get reimbursed, correct?
Correct, so this is reimbursable, basically, from soil and water, so we have to fork out a hundred percent upfront, and then they will reimburse us the difference, other than what the normal part-time rate was gonna be for the next three years.
Yes.
And then at that time, then the interlocal agreement will come back before you guys to reevaluate.
Any questions or additional discussion? I would entertain a motion then.
Still moved.
Moved by Mike Myers. Oh, sorry.
Quick comment. Good conversation. Sorry, Grant Swartz and Truver. Megan and I spoke about this a couple of times, but I just wanted her to talk a little bit about it, the purpose of the function. What I had understood, too, was that maybe you'd be willing to help other branches of government address some needs. Couple commissioners just made the comment that they wanted to see assistance for West Boggs to address their water quality issue, and now that we've got somebody full-time, maybe that's something that you could look into, educate, et cetera, so we can move that date for closing for their back of the year. That's all, thanks.
Thank you, Grant.
Motion still stands.
Okay. Motion by Mike Myers, second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mike Sprinkle. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next order of business is item number four, Salary Ordinance Amendments. There's a couple different, a couple different issues in here. The first one was, first of all, dealing with salaries, the first one is the soil and water, and that was the thing we just heard about. We have a bunch of them from the Health Department, and the majority of those are that we used grants in the prior year, and now we're going to estate fund it in the Health Department. So most of them have to do with that. There are the first couple, two, one was expanding, expanding responsibilities in case management, and expanded well-water testing program. All the rest were moved from Fund nine one oh two and has been replaced with Fund one one six one. That's for the Health Department, okay? That'll take us down to the E nine, or make, take us to the highway one, I guess.
And then the highway one is the payout for one of their employees that retired, and it's just making that whole.
Yeah, Janice. And then we had the E nine one one, which were, I think, just put in the wrong.
Yeah, so during budget time, whenever we uploaded to the state, it went through in budgets correctly, but whenever we uploaded to the state, we missed the fact that it, it dumped inside the wrong bucket, so we're just separating that back out.
And the final one is the prosecutor, and we're like a hundred and some odd dollars short in the, in the salary fund.
And that had to do with the two-week offset of the pay.
Okay. Are there any, any questions about any of those individually, or?
I think Kelly had sent out some information, it was pretty comprehensive.
Oh, yes.
They took care of that for me.
Pretty good information.
Absolutely, yeah, reports in mid-year and staff reports. I appreciate that.
We're gonna do them all as one lump sum?
Yes.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Tony Dungeon, looking for a second.
Second.
Second by Matt Meredith. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? unanimous. Okay, that'll bring us to item number five on the agenda, encumbrances. Encumbrances are monies that we committed to spend last year and haven't done it yet, or projects that were started last year and have not been completed yet. In the total is two point seven? Yeah, two points, two million, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and four cents. All the money is there, was in there from last year, and would just be pulled over to this year to cover these last year's expenses.
And some of it being Boggs' non-taxation spending.
Any discussion, further discussion on it? I would entertain a motion then to, to approve them, the twenty-four encumbrances.
Still move.
Second.
Second, Mike Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. Carried, unanimous. Okay, conflict of interest forms, is that what was passed out in the blue folders? Okay, so let's get those completed today, since we're all here, we'll get that done in behind us, and then Karma can get them in the record, and should be good. Any problems with that? But it's good. We'll get that taken care of for you. Courthouse bond update. Grant, would you like to update the group on that?
If you wanted to jump down to another.
Oh, we could do that, go ahead.
Do that.
Okay.
Is Jason expecting a decision today?
I think he would, Grant Swartz and Truver, I think he would like a decision, I mean, I guess it doesn't matter what Jason wants. Ultimately, my understanding is that Hammers should be flying, so to speak, on February the twelfth. Now, there's no real rush, but I think we have sufficient information, which we got on Friday, in order to make a decision. I don't wanna rush you into a decision, and I'll just summarize for you. We had four bids that we got on Friday, got that information on Monday, maybe. Nathan and I had a call with Jason Caitlin, Bond Counsel, handful of people yesterday. And I know it's kind of a short notice, but I, we have four good options, but, you know, these are objective decisions. You've got three banks and the Indiana Bond Bank. You should have all the information in an email and in front of you. It will depend on a variety of factors, including the desire for flexibility you've expressed in the past, but also what the lowest rate is, the lowest cost for the debt. So if you pay it off early, you know, obviously you'll, you'll save some interest, but we may not have all that cash on hand. Indiana Bond Bank has a call provision not sooner than ten years. One of the banks was sooner than that, which, if you were to pay it off, you would obviously pay less in interest. You can see the rates there within your email, within your sheet. I was really glad, and I know that, you know, that this, it was an uncomfortable thing, but I was really glad that we did this a second time, because we had multiple people looking at it. All provided good bids, all provided good information. To be clear, Indiana Bond Bank is not really a bank, okay? It's a function of state government. There are a handful of things, then, that still would have to happen if you were to go with that option, okay? They don't meet until February. So, you know, if Hammers are supposedly gonna be flying at some date in February, that it'll, that particular option will delay, delay that. Now, is that the end of the world? You know, I don't know. It's ultimately.
Well, why, why would it delay?
Because the meeting for Indiana Bond Bank, I believe, is, it's in the detail there that she passed along, I believe it's February the tenth?
Fourteenth.
Okay, fourteenth. When they would meet, and there's additional information we have to give to the Bond Bank before we could actually do the transaction.
And it still isn't a fixed rate. What they gave us is their rate today, the rate in February.
Jason will have to speak to that, but it's, it's the lowest rate because it's a subsidized rate, right? In some form or fashion.
Cost of funds.
Yeah. In some form or fashion. Now, it still may be the best option for you all in your minds. Again, we have four options, two that sort of stood out, I guess, as related to our call yesterday, okay? And you'll see that in Caitlin's summary, in Jason's comments, in my comments. Nathan made some comments, and I didn't invite any of you all intentionally, because there was, you know, some, some of you are bank employees or related to bank employees, which is totally fine. But I just wanted it to be something that you all could look at all together. You know, Nathan was involved, not that it's his call, it's your call on any fiscal decisions. And again, I'm, I'm pleased that we have a number of options, I'm pleased that you have some flexibility, which is what I think you wanted. We didn't need the money, whatever, a handful of months ago, and we think we need it now.
Well, I, I guess, that, that's, my question, though, is why would that hold up? Things starting, I mean, the county's putting in money as well.
We're supposed to have all funds on hand before we enter into contracts.
Okay, that's, that's what I was getting. So we ha, is that by law?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have to have the money before we obligate ourselves as a body.
Man, I, because I know we, I mean, the county's putting in, in cash.
Correct.
If we could just.
But we don't have all the cash on hand, ready to go. We've done all the steps if we were to go with a bank, okay? If we go with Indiana Bond Bank, we still have a couple of things that we will have to do. At least that's my understanding. Never worked with Indiana Bond Bank. And did you have anything you wanted to say, or? Before we got Jason on, any of you have any follow-up questions? I'm sure he'll add some, some color to it.
About time, how is he gonna call him?
Um.
Okay.
Okay, very good, thanks.
So to answer the broader question, ideally, we have a decision today, unless there are questions or concerns. We have a low rate from a bank, and we have the Indiana Bond Bank, again, it's not a bank. We would have additional work and probably cost associated with that process. You'll see.
Basically boils down to, do we think we're gonna have extra cash in the next six years that we can flop down in addition to the payment, or pay it off in six years? Because that's, that's the, that's the advantage with, with Baird. If you go to Indiana Bond Bank, it's ten years. Do we think we're going to have that, any of those funds available in the next six to ten years?
It appears that you're tied up for at least ten years, correct? So you're gonna pay all the interest for at least ten years. With Baird, they have an earlier provision such that you could pay it off, you know, very quickly, as, as quickly as six years. It could be seven, eight, nine, and you'd still be somewhere in between, you know?
Not only pay it off, but you can make two hundred and fifty thousand dollar additional payments every year on the anniversary date.
Correct.
You have that cash this year, you could drop a quarter of a million and.
If you look at it, it's about a four and a half year earliest potential payoff between the Baird and the ten-year. So it, it is about a six-year and then a. And so you would save the most amount of interest going with that option, but that's also requiring you to have to hand, pay it off, you know?
Even if you don't pay it off? And I don't. You'll pay off, it's dropping some extra principal then.
Correct.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You know, on the anniversary date, you can, then making that annual payment of four fifty-nine, you could flop down six hundred or whatever if you've got it.
Or even a hundred if you have it.
A hundred extra, yeah.
Whatever, whatever you have.
You took the most aggressive approach, you'll save, you'll, you'll pay less interest than you would with even Indiana Bond Bank.
I think that's, yeah, that's very important. You know, we've always wanted to have some flexibility in these things.
Sorry?
We always wanted to have some flexibility, you know?
So basically, we're gonna pay, you're suggesting that thirty thousand a year, we're gonna pay additional for that flexibility, that's, everybody understands that. I mean, that's how I see it. So over the six years, and we're committing a hundred and eighty thousand dollars higher interest, total interest payments.
Correct, if, if you don't take the more aggressive approach and try to pay it off earlier, Baird a higher rate. But Jason was very, I don't know, I felt, I felt good about fiscal decisions yesterday. Jason was very complimentary, maybe he's talking with Nathan or myself, but he said that we have a really good history of making good choices, trying to pay these things off early and not let them hang on, so, I mean, that's, that's a tribute to you well and your predecessor.
It's, I think, which way to go? I don't know, my experience with Jason over the years has been, he'll tell you straight, you know? He's not gonna tell you what you want to hear, he'll tell you what you need to hear.
Oh, yeah, very complimentary. And he's said many times, not, not every county can do this. You know, there's been some discussion about additional costs, different, different sources, different ways to get the money, but it seems like we can do it within a fairly short timeframe and make. Something that you probably do need to decide that he asked us yesterday, that is a council decision, is the source of the funds.
Oh, yeah, we can talk about that. And so the force of our, the source of our county fund, and I think calculating, so, you had a, you had a paper written up, you still have it with you?
Yeah, I don't have it with me, but I've got it, where, where the area was gonna come from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I emailed everybody here months ago.
Correct, but we're gonna need to get some of that fine and tuned and figured out, so we can get the additional appropriation by the, here in another week or so, by the twentieth, we're gonna need that done for it to be available for us to be able to start spending in February.
So since I don't have my computer with me, if I email what, what we had discussed to everybody.
Then we could present it at the next meeting, but yeah, we'll need to get the paperwork done prior to.
Okay.
And you have what you need to, setting up funds and.
Probably have it in here.
Big sheets and that.
Yeah, so as part of the ICE Miller's ordinance, it's within that document on this, on, I think it's on page twenty-three or something out of that document, if I recall correctly, that, for us to do that. So we have started anticipating all that stuff within our financial software.
Done our bond ordinance, we've done an appropriation ordinance, wanna make a decision today on a rate and a funds provider, a lender, can. Wanna go with the Bond Bank, it will take a little bit longer, but otherwise, we should be done in two to three weeks.
Jason's seven minutes late.
I know, I've sent him an email.
Do you want to move on and knock out a couple of those?
Yep. Grant, since you're up there, you wanna update us on the courthouse renovation update? Do you have any information on that?
Uh, that, uh, I, I really don't, I mean, we, we've gotta get the, the debt done before we can sign contracts. The contracts are approved, sorry, the contracts are approved, terms and conditions. We spent quite a bit of time on that, I think we're comfortable with it. Now, we did this as well when we did this building, but our architect didn't use the, he just used a default set of terms and conditions, but I think we've got that addressed on this particular project over here. I think we're all ready to go, and it should take two or three weeks. As part of your motion, if you approve everything today, we will just want you to take whatever additional action to get this across the finish line.
And we are in the process of moving, I think some departments are moving right now, and then some are scheduled for next, next week, I believe. And in the move, in the moving fund, or the soft cost fund that we have out there, I think there's approximately a quarter of a million dollars left in there, and at the, at the commissioner's meeting yesterday, there was some discussion, they thought there would be some money left over after they got done, which was, I thought was good news.
Hey, you wanna get on the phone? Okay, no problem. Should have a Zoom link, but let me make sure.
We've got his number, if he wants us to call, I can call on here so I can get on and speak.
How about this, James? Could we call you on this number from, from our, okay, we'll do that right now.
Matt? How's it? Oh, my email.
Oh, okay, we're gonna talk about the breakdown of our funds?
Yeah, and you had, I had the breakdown that you had, yeah.
Yeah.
Jason, first, and we'll come back to that.
You got it. That's okay.
This is Jason.
Hey, Jason, so we've got you on the conference call now.
Okay, thanks. Good morning, sir. Morning.
Jason, this is Tom Schaefer, we've had a little bit of a discussion already on, on the courthouse bond update, and we were hoping you could give us a little bit more enlightenment on that subject.
Okay. Well, I know Grant sent out some information that we had put together based upon the bids that we received. I can kinda go over that summary sheet, if you'd like, or if you already have done that, you have specific questions, I can, I can do that as well, however you prefer to proceed.
Jason, I'll just, I'll just help you out a little bit, so we don't have to go over everything again. Uh, we've spent about five minutes going over the information that we talked about yesterday. We have sent out everything to the council. Very glad that we had four options, three banks and the Indiana Bond Bank, which I'm not trying to be negative towards them, I just said it's not really a bank, it's more, you know, the, the state of Indiana, so to speak. They did have the lowest rate, but some of the other options offered flexibility that the council had asked about. So three banks plus the Indiana Bond Bank, they've got all the information in front of them here, the summary of bids. We know that there's like a fifteen-year option and a twenty-year option. Seems they're interested in the, the shorter option and potentially paying things off early. So that second piece of information that Caitlin sent in the afternoon afterwards was, to me, was, was very helpful, because that showed that it, it would still be the cheapest option to take an aggressive approach and, and obviously try to pay it down early, and the only way to do that would be with the Baird option. Is that correct, Jason?
Yeah, that's correct, I mean, through the Bond Bank, they do have a lower, the lower interest rate, but it's not fixed. That, that's the other thing I wanna make sure the council is aware of. We would have to go through, you know, their approval process, which we wouldn't be able to do until, you know, next month, so we're talking about, you know, three days away, so that, there's some risk there that that rate that I'm showing you could increase. Uh, but also, going through the Bond Bank, we can't pay the bonds off any quicker than ten years. Where Baird has offered that, we can start paying up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in principal early, starting next year, July of two thousand and twenty-five, and in, in six years, by two thousand and thirty, we can pay it all off with no premium. So Baird does give you more flexibility and opportunity to pay the bonds off quicker and faster, if you'd like. And, and by doing that, that's what you're referring to, Grant, that Caitlin sent out last night. We kinda showed if you were to pay off the, if we went with the Indiana Bond Bank and paid them off in ten years, your total interest would be about one point two million, but with Baird, even though it has a higher interest rate, since we're able to pay them off four years quicker, your interest would only be one point one million.
Yeah. They have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars if you take the most aggressive approach.
Right. And, and that doesn't even include if, if the county wanted to and had to where with all to pay an extra two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, you know, two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six, which it has the option, so that, you know, that, that interest would be even lower if the county was even more aggressive than what we're showing here. And the Baird rate, that is good, and the rate that I'm showing you there, that is good, as long as we close on these bonds by February fourteenth, and we've confirmed with ICE Miller, police of Lee, that, you know, the county can make a decision this week that there's no issue with closing by February fourteenth.
We've discussed fifteen and twenty years, options. I think that would be the next, fifteen and twenty.
Grant, Jason, Grant mentioned earlier that there would be some additional cost with the Indiana Bond Bank. Can you elaborate on that a little more?
Yeah, potentially, and Jason, Jason, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I, I was mainly referring to the additional effort of presenting to them and whatever additional paperwork and just the delay, but maybe you can, maybe you can speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, there, I mean, there would be some additional work, not much from our, our perspective, because we've done all the work already, pretty much, we just had to fill out their application. So there would be a little bit more cost on our part, and that we would have to attend the meeting. The Bond Bank does charge a thirty-five thousand dollar, well, depending upon the terms, a thirty thousand dollar fee. If you do a fifteen-year bond, it's a thirty-five thousand dollar fee, or a twenty-year bond. They cover their legal expenses and administrative expenses. But that would be kinda offset by the twenty-five thousand dollar placement fee that Baird is requesting as well. But Baird does have a little bit more upfront cost, but that's included in these numbers here that I'm showing you with the total interest.
Jason, this is Tony, are those fees financed? Jason, this is Tony, are those fees financed? Is that?
Um, right now, we're just doing a $5 million bond issue, so the fee could either come out of the $5 million or it could come out of the cash on hand that the county is applying for the project. But we just, we just gone out with a $5 million bond at this time.
We would need to pay it upfront.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there any room for negotiations in that with, with Baird?
I'm sure. But Jason, what do you think, can we negotiate with Baird?
On the fee?
The 25,000?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I mean, we could definitely negotiate with them.
It's me, that seems like the most logical option for the path that we wanna take. I definitely would be willing to, or want to go negotiate that a little bit, see if we can get a better deal, but for as aggressive as we like to be in the county. That, that sounds good to me. We still don't know what the bond bank rate would be exactly.
Not exactly.
Yeah, that's.
I don't, I don't like, oh, and we're, we're just waiting and then if it's bad, you know, we're, we're behind the eight ball at that point.
I really like.
And I will tell you, I'm happy to, to contact Baird and negotiate the rate, the 25,000. I, I will tell you, um, I mean, 20,000 is their fee and then the 5,000 is for their legal fees. And, and 20,000 for a bond, that is pretty cheap.
Gotcha.
Uh, I said, I'll, I'll, I'm more than happy to, you know, ask them about that, but I, if they do move, I don't think they'll move too much.
No, it doesn't hurt to ask.
That's right.
Oh, no, no, and I, I'm happy to ask.
Yeah.
So from the debt service level, do we, we looking at 15 or 20 years?
I think you guys are looking really to pay it off earlier, I think we're, definitely should go with the 15, don't, don't you?
Because there's, they're under no, under no permutation of going 15 years.
Right.
Probably just go with the rating. And the likelihood of you doing it sooner than with the bond bank fees.
Maybe not to pay it off, but to pay additional principal, yes.
If you, the amount of cost and have flexibility. Have the most flexibility, which lets you.
I think we budgeted in, as we were talking about the bond and the amount of the bond, half million dollars for that payment. And their 15-year rate is under half million dollars and they, they're, Baird is providing us, in my opinion, a lot more flexibility on how we wanna pay and when we wanna pay. And, uh, my two cents is I, I, I think that that's the way I would like to go.
Sounded like a motion, didn't it?
Is that a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion, a 15-year, uh, bond rate with Baird.
With Baird.
I will second that motion, I'm for that flexibility.
Further discussion, Darren.
I would say, do we wanna, that caveat with the fact that we're gonna try to lower the fee?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Include that as part of it because if they say absolutely not, maybe, think, think otherwise, but. What we would like, Jason, is for them to go further down and just, uh.
Yeah, we're talking, on the whole equation, we're talking pennies now.
Yeah.
Right.
It is.
Yeah.
And you still want to, uh, borrow just the 5 million, no matter what the, the fees are, whatever the fees are?
Yeah.
We'll just, you'll pay that with the cash on hand, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I can do that. I can get them a call this morning.
We're, and we're not gonna finance, we're, that's not coming out, we'll pay those fees.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're not gonna finance borrowed.
Right.
That was the first.
All right, um, so we have a motion by Mike Sprink.
I second you.
By Mike Sprinkle to go ahead and use Baird, try to have Jason try to negotiate the fee, other than that, it gives us the most flexibility. I was seconded by Matt Meredith. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Unanimous.
Jason, do you need any additional information from us?
I don't need that.
To go ahead?
Uh, no, no, I will give Baird a call this morning and Grant, I'll reach out to you later this morning with three.
Okay. Um, I do have a, I have a couple of hearings, but what I would say is, you know, email the same group and I'll get it out to the council. If, if we don't communicate over the phone.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. Thanks, Jason.
Anything else to add, Grant?
I think we're good on the bonds, um, and then, I don't know if there's any other discussion on the renovation itself. At their last meeting, did they approve a, a cost, I think in December, correct, Jim? I mean, just like what, what the overall cost was going to be?
13.7, that number?
All right, what I'd sent out was, total cost was 13, 13 million 724, bond was 5 million, edit, we were gonna take 876,000, rainy day was 850,000.
Oh, you got it, okay, okay.
Yeah, they've got the email, cum cap was a million and general fund was 6 million.
Yeah. So 13.724, 470 is the current price. You all approved that unanimously at your, at your last meeting, um, I guess, any other discussion?
Okay, good then. Okay, thank you, big, big decision, thank you, Grant.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll make it a point, um, to attend the next commissioners meeting, I did yesterday too, but they didn't have that much on the courthouse renovation update. But hopefully I'll be able to come to you guys with a little, little more information next time. Um, there, there was one other issue they talked about was the windows, we're still dealing with the window thing and it, it's been, um, I can't remember the exact, what was the organization we were?
With the DNR, with the historical piece of the building, so they're still working with trying to get that approved.
It could, if we get it approved, first of all, it has to have the same appearance at standing back 10 feet. Um, and there's something about a beveled edge on the existing windows versus the, the ones we're replacing it with, so.
Which you can't see.
Right, and I couldn't see it at 10 feet even with my glasses, so.
$200,000 difference.
Yeah, a little, actually a little bit over that, um, so I'll keep you posted on that. Um, the, the good news is, um, according to the, uh, Nathan yesterday, Commissioner Gafford, the, um, our covenant with the state is over in September. And, you know, the project's scheduled to finish around May, I guess, so, you know, who knows if it'll finish on time, we may still be able to use the windows that we want and save the 200,000, because the timeline's kinda closed.
It's over this September, 24?
Yes.
24, yeah, or 25.
Oh, 25.
It was up 25, because it's set to be completed just a few months prior to the.
So it would, it would expire prior to the completion of the building, but not, not this year, but next year.
Depending on if there's any delays.
Okay.
Windows may have to go in last.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say. Okay, so I'll, I'll, I'll keep you posted on that. Okay, the next thing that we have is the, uh, additional appropriations. Uh, we have four there for the soil and water, the coordinator we talked about already, the other are the, uh, benefits, the perf, social security, Medicare and health insurance for a total of $42,327.17.
No moves.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, seconded by Marilyn McCullough. Um, any further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor of the soil and water conservation coordinator, perf, Medicare and health insurance of 42,327?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed? Motion carried unanimously. The next one is edit, it's for the commons project. You know that we have committed a total of, I think it was 750,000 and each year is 150,000 over five years, this will be our second installment of 150,000, so we need to take action on that.
No move.
Matt Meredith, motioned?
Second.
Second by Mike Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. The next one is, uh, uniforms. Not sure about that, I think it was in the collection, okay, great, you're here!
Um, this was just to put that back in our budget because it was approved by the DOC and our, our numbers have to match up and I've talked to Matt about it and I'm not planning on spending that, I was going to just wait until we had the Davies County IDs available and get everybody a printed ID, I like that idea better anyways, so, we're just gonna, I'll probably just move that money around to something else later, but I just need that back in there for our.
So we may, we, during the budgeting process, we took that out again, something?
Yeah.
Because it was uniforms, yeah.
What you did for everybody, it'll.
Okay, it was across the board move, but we weren't supposed to touch that one, I guess.
But that was just all that I needed today to just get that put back in there and I'll probably just move that money around.
Okay, any other questions for Lauren?
Make an appro, uh, a motion to approve that.
Okay, it's been motioned by Matt Meredith that we go ahead and put the uniform money back into the community corrections.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mike Sprinkle. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign? You're good.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming today. Okay, the next is the clerk perpetuation fund, we have, uh, shredding expenses and bookshelves unit, 100,000 for a total of 120,000.
And Lauren was not able to be here, today's the first day of filing for elections.
Right, so yesterday, at the commissioners meeting, she gave a little presentation there, so this'll take care of it and she's actually got the whole thing down to about, was it 1?
137,000.
137,000, because they actually got a little more, um.
They were able to destroy a few things that they didn't think they were able to, so they got.
A little more shredding. So that, actually good news there. Okay, so I would entertain a motion on 120,000.
Motion approved.
Motion by, uh, Tony Dungeon, is there a second? Second by Mike Myers. All those in favor signify, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Unanimous. Okay, the next is the motor vehicle highway administration, this, this is for a retirement of Janice paying out the funds, we talked about that previously. The total was 14,678.81.
No move.
Moved by Matt Meredith, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Marilyn McCullough. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Next we have the Indiana Health First Indiana accounts. We talked about the, uh, first couple already. And here comes Kelly to update us on.
Sincerely apologize for my oversight, we were knee deep in a staff meeting and I forgot about it at 15. Um, I won't do that again.
We appreciate the emails and all the communication, it was very thorough and we appreciate that.
You're welcome. It is something very new across Indiana, um, we are very proud to be a leader in the Health First Indiana funding project in the state. So I did submit to you, um, kinda the budget allocation, what it looks like statewide, what to expect, what we have to do. So I would be happy to answer any questions about those specifics.
Wow, that was very, I mean, the fourth quarter report was good and the whole annual report that you gave us, so outstanding.
Well, um, the new H, we call it HFI, um, that will be the 1161 fund in the state board of account name. Um, we have, uh, at the health department, um, through Dr. Holzopel and our projected needs, created the budget that's been presented. And, um, we are mostly growing, um, with our, um, infant and maternal, um, child needs. We are also growing in our immigration clinic, as you all know, and several other key parts that our community is lacking, especially dental and potentially nutrition, and our partnerships are incredible. Um, we are, we are working daily with, my producer extension is in the room, but we're also working daily with VCH as well as First Choice Solutions and the list goes on and on and on. So we, um, we're happy to receive these funds, but we also understand, um, the health department can only grow, um, at a certain level, we're already busting at the seams. But this first year of this HFI money, um, we are going to target those at-risk individuals, uh, in our community. We're gonna grow, um, hopefully in the Amish and Mennonite community as well, our AED program, we hope to grow exponentially. We're gonna sit back in the third quarter and really evaluate and look at the next year's budget and see, um, see some of that, that data that the state puts out for us, as well as our own internal data. Because that money is set to, um, almost double next year. We have to meet those buckets of performance indicators and certain categories I've shared with you all, so we are full seam ahead and, um, very glad to have each of your support and always have an open door if you have questions. And I'm glad to present this because it's not a grant. It, it is helping us exponentially in, um, in continuity and to clean up some of these grants. Health departments have operated on grants for many, many years, uh, they come, they go depending upon what's going on currently, if it's COVID, if it's immigration, if it's, um, infant mortality, they throw money at us. Well, this is kinda to help plug that and give continuity to our health department, especially in the financial realm where we have operated on shoestring on grants for years, so. Cleaning up the books.
Thank you.
I do.
Is there any, uh, questions for Kelly? Kathy's here also, so. Okay, so the total, total for the, uh, Health First Indiana is 402,811.75. I would entertain a motion.
No move.
Uh, who moved that?
Who's Mike?
Okay. Motion by Mike Myers, second by Matt Meredith. To, uh, fund the Health, Health First Indiana, which is really moving from a grant to, uh, our regular account. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for the information. Thanks, Kelly.
Okay, the next one on there is the state E911. And that's getting the money back in the correct account, right, all 370,515. I would entertain a motion.
No move.
Motion by Matt Meredith.
Second.
Second by Tony Dungeon. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Same sign. Motion carried, unanimous, 370,515. Okay, the next one is the health department school liaison grant. Kelly's gonna come back up and tell us a little bit about that.
Um, that was a, um, a budget request that we came to you all, um, back at budget hearing session time. This is a grant we've received, this is the third year in a row, you may have read in the reports. We have a comprehensive school nurse liaison program that we operate. Each of our public health nurses are partnered with school corporations and we, um, oversee and implement an array of activities in our schools through the nurses as well as supporting children and their basic needs that school nurses can't provide. So this grant, um, has been a federal grant, we're in our third year and we pay our school nurse liaisons out of it, we also pay, um, some interpreter services, some grant administration services and supplies, which we, we, where we support the schools, and contract services. We do have a, a nurse practitioner and other contract personnel that support that program as well.
How many year contract is this one?
One year. One year, that's, this is for '24.
Okay.
Um, I think there was an oversight with Gateway, which is why we're having to re-appropriate.
So this is the same thing, it got put into 1159 instead, it did not get separated out, so it's just gotta get put in the right bucket for the grant funding.
Okay, any other questions?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Mike Sprinkle to approve the 292,920, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Marilyn McCullough, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Same sign, nope, motion approved, passed.
I, I do have one question for Kelly.
Yes.
Yes.
Regarding, I mean, when you look at all the services that the health department provides, it, I would, I don't know how to categorize it other than more of a physical health versus mental health. And, and, and so how, I mean, where's, where are we getting, I mean, when I look at all the services and the programs you've got, I know that there's regional mental health stuff going on with, between the local counties. How much collaboration and what all is going on there?
Well, um, that is one thing we've identified that we, across, um, the board, uh, need to focus on is behavioral health, be it mental health and/or addiction. Um, we, we hope that we can start offering some services internally. The, the Family Health Center does offer services and has attended some of our events. Um, but this is where a lack of access and practitioners is a real problem for us. So I think in the next year to two years, we're really going to focus on how we can support community-wide partnerships to grow that, but right now, it is, it is a great need.
Because I, I just, I mean, I'm on the regional council, and, um, I just see there needs to be a little more publicity and emphasis put on, not necessarily the, basically identifying the resources that people can go to and get. It just seems like we don't have quite as much. But I see that your office needs to be more involved with that, or to help facilitate that, I guess. Point people in the right direction and...
We've put together some community resource guides for access to a multitude of, um, resources. Uh, we have that, um, available at different events we hold, but it's a really good point. I hope, I was recently appointed to the Indiana Behavioral Health Commission, and, um, will be actively involved in looking at ways we can take all this state money they have, the millions they're wanting to put in, mental health and addiction, and how we can implement local programs and access, really get to the root of the need, which I, I think a lot of it is practitioners. But we are actively engaged and will continue to be, because we see it every day.
Yeah, well, and I guess, I guess too, I, I think you and I may have talked about this briefly a while back ago, but having, um, Commissioner, one of the commissioners, one of the councilmen are on that regional council, and, um, it would be nice, I, I would like to see more Health Department folks involved and maybe have a, a permanent representative from that department on that council as well.
We, we would do that.
Okay.
Yeah, just like, no.
I'll, I'll get, I'll follow up with you then sometime.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, next thing, we're in, item 10 is the transfer of funds. And I believe we have two. One, one we already talked about with the prosecutor. Um, that is the account that's short 151 dollars and 38 cents. Do we need to take action on that again? Nope, okay. That was taken care of.
The only thing for the transfer, out of category transfer, is the notary bond to the license renewal, a hundred dollars, and that has to do with the 365 renewal that was just budgeted. So they're just taking it out of notary bonds.
Okay, so that's, that's the ask. Is there a motion to that effect?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Matt Meredith.
Second.
Second by Tony Dungeon to move the hundred dollars for license renewals. All those in favor? Signify saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, there's some other information in your packet concerning the Davies-Martin Joint Park and Recreation Board Meeting from 11/13/23. Any, uh, comments, questions from the, uh, public? Counsel?
It's, it's a lot earlier, so there's... They haven't adapted yet.
I don't know that I have. Okay, I would entertain a mission and, yeah, motion to adjourn the meeting.
No moves.
Moved by Tony, seconded by Matt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.